Then are represented in just our multilingual learner program.
I mean, what's the five twelve percent mark?
Marchalies.
Marchalies?
Yes.
Delayed question, I didn't like formally remind how I wanted to ask this. So way back, like first slide, we have enrollment districts going down and multi-language learners going up.
Yes.
Wouldn't go. Is there a reason that you can think of other than changing demographics for that? Like, did we change the tests? Did we, like, would we define things change? Or is it really just that the districts are counting more numbers?
I think it's largely demographic based. And there's probably something to be said about the assessment has changed in the last two years. But I think we're seeing a larger influx of students who are new. So I think it's mostly demographic based, yeah.
Could I ask, maybe you said this and I just missed a piece, why English is included here?
Great question. So that speaks to the three different language buckets we have. So when we test our students, it's based on two language buckets. It's either their native language or the language they use most in the home. So there could be students who in our system, their native language shows English, but the language they use most in the home is Spanish. So in this graph, they would show up as an English speaker and we would have to do another, like, sub-data poll to see what their second language is.
And those would be ML students as well?
They could be, yeah. We're required to test them if they report that they have a language other than English in either their native language spot on the home language survey or the language they use most in the home. And sometimes we have students who enter more than one language on the form, but we're only able to enter one language into the field. So sometimes it'll say like English slash Spanish on every line. And so sometimes what our registrars will do is they'll enter English in one and Spanish in the other. But we're still required to test them and they qualify for our program.
If they're born in the United States and English was of, and one language is spoken at home, non-English is spoken at home, but they've been learned, born in the United States, then are they still required to be tested?
Yes, we're required to test them based on how they complete their home language survey, which is one of the documents that all families complete upon registration. So if they enter another language, we're required to test them.
Got it.
Yep. Great questions. Um, okay, this is a snapshot from homeroom of where our students are. What I want to point out, this was a little complex to get, but our multilingual learners are in the all-student bucket. They're not pulled out. But the lighter blue is all students and how the percentage of them that are in each of these programs listed. So for example, highly capable, three point seven three percent. And then the dark blue are the percentage of multilingual learners that are in that program. So as you can see there, we have a higher percentage of students who are multilingual learners in the kind of vento, our lab services, slightly higher in special education. So we often refer to them as dual-identified, it's a multilingual learner and special ed. And then a much higher percentage represented in our free reduced lunch. And then lower in highly capable and five oh four.
And are, because again, do we have any sort of supports in place? I have a hard time believing that point four percent are highly capable. I would think English is the barrier.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have supports in place for those students?
Yeah, so I know for our highly capable assessment, the piece that is used is, they've tried to remove language, it's like all visuals for the assessment to try and target that. And that is definitely an area of growth, I think, for our system, but I would love to see how we could increase that. Because I would agree with you, I think it's like, it could be that. I also think with our new requirement of offering the testing during the school day, I think that will also reduce some barriers for families who maybe didn't opt in when we didn't have that.
We used to, when we did the multidisciplinary screening committee, for highly capable, you know, we would have a cutoff point with the various things. We didn't at that point have the universal screen that was non-verbal, which is great addition. But if there were a child who clearly was like doing really great in math, lower in English Language Arts, but was multilingual, we would, we would dig deeper. We would talk to the teacher, we would look at their records. And there were kids that we would put into the program with that in mind. Because we realized that that might have been depressing there. So I'm hoping they still do that multidisciplinary screening in that same way. Some districts do and some districts are more like, no, you make a cutoff or not. But that's not the way.
I know there's a committee that dives deep into the data to support that.
And probably we won't put too much on this, but highly capable data. I do know there are people working on that and we can certainly bring them in or have them provide us with some great information about that.
Yeah, yeah. And this is the attendance data. This is from OSPI report cards. So it does differentiate our all students, which includes our multilingual learners, then a percentage for our multilingual learners, and then for our non-multilingual learners, so our students who are not in the program. And that's the percentage of students who had fewer than two absences per month.
But we don't, we don't know which part of that has to do with them being in, you know, like Kindergarten or in a low-income situation.
Correct, yeah, we have to dive into this a little bit more closely.
You know, what ML contributes to the kids.
Yeah, what are the factors, yeah. Okay, so I'm going to dive into looking at the academic performance, which will also include some graduation data. So you may have questions, so just ask them as they come up and then we'll speak to each of the pieces. Okay, so on this, this is our SBA, English Language Arts, percent of the population that it shows that met standard. And we have some historical data with each of these groups. So we have all students in the lighter blue, our students who are not multilingual learners in the darker blue, and then our multilingual learners are in the orange color. So it's the percent of those students each year that met standard on English Language Arts, SBA.
So that's current, not the exited?
Correct. Our exited is actually captured within that all-student section. And I actually made a note because I was just looking at this today and it's not on here. I do have some data from the state. Our students who exited and they've just been in the last two years, so it's not all of our exited, but just in the last two years, about sixty percent of them meet standard on the English Language Arts.
Well, that's great.
So once they exit, they are getting closer to that same performance.
What, what age is the SBA?
SBA begins in third grade, so this would not include any of our kinder through second grade students. And this is that same information for math. So again, you'll see all students in that light blue, non-multilingual learners in the darker blue, and then our multilingual learners in the orange. And again, that historical data for you to see. And I also pulled for the math, for students who've exited in the last two years, forty-nine percent of them met math. So getting closer. And I would, this may be, want to pull some more data on when they are further past that exit as they're continuing to acquire language.
So, so that is the same or exceeding?
Exceeding the all.
Exceeding, I mean, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Somewhat slightly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And when you say exited, I know they're still watched or monitored.
Yes.
Is it, is it for two years?
We monitor for two years, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this is some district's graduation data, both overall graduation rate and ML graduation rate. So you'll see our information on the far left there. And then we pulled in some surrounding districts as well as the state to look at where we are at. So as you can see, our overall graduation rate is very similar to the state. Slightly lower than some of the systems that have a similar demographic as us, like Everett and near, and a neighbor. And then same with our ML graduation rates.
Do we happen to know anything about our exited ML students?
Oh, I, that would be great to add that in, yes. I can, I don't have that in front of me today, but I'm going to make a note of that. And I could maybe follow up with that in a Friday memo.
I'd also be curious to see what their extended grad rate is.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know our extended grad rate is much better than the core year.
Yes.
And it'd be interesting to see what happens with the ML kids, because I would think they would benefit from that extra time.
Yeah, and we know some of them do, especially when we have newcomers coming in. Um, so somewhat related is the dropout. So we have the same information with the same districts as well as state data, overall, and then our ML students.
That'll give us, I'm just trying to see.
Mm-hmm.
I would be curious to, um, for districts like maybe Yakima or Placetree, and a lot of people would definitely give me multilanguage service of the same data and see, like, are they, are they experiencing stuff we are, are they like more successful? Do they have things that maybe we can learn from, so?
Yeah, we could definitely get you some of that information. Um, okay, so then this is just our district over time. So looking at some historical information.
Can I go back one second? I just want to make sure I understand that when we are talking about the multilingual dropout rate, does that mean they were in the multilingual program at the time they dropped out?
Yes, yes.
So for most of these kids, I mean, what we're talking about are high school level kids, which means they came to our country when they're already pretty old.
Potentially.
Potentially, and probably behind in credits and in difficult situations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, right.
Yeah, you see, yeah.
Um, so then this is some historical data. So the overall graduation rate is in blue, the ML grad rate is in red, and then yellow are non-multilingual learners and their grad rate. And now I'm making a note to maybe pull up the exited students and see if they would show on a graphic desk.
There's a lot of strides there, sixteen to nineteen. It'll change, but it's encouraging.
Okay, so before I go to the next slide, I'm just going to say the next slide shows each of our high schools grad rates. And after I show that slide, I'm actually going to dive into one building in particular to kind of speak to some of the positive practices we have in place. So this is within our district. We have the blue line is our overall district grad rate. The red line is the district ML grad rate. And then each of the other lines represent each of our four brands of high schools. So Mount Lake Terrace is in yellow, and that's their ML grad rate. Edmonds Woodway is in green. Meadowdale High School is in purple. And Linwood is kind of that lighter blue turquoise-y color.
Are there numbers of ML kids or I guess percentages at each school about similar?
So great question. So I actually, when I look at this, I ask what's going well in Mount Lake Terrace. Something's working really well. And so I've actually connected with that building. And so that's what I'm going to dive into, because that building actually is our smaller population. Number four. And they have about a hundred and seventy-one, and the other three high schools all have over two hundred, up to two E D in one of our high schools. And Mount Lake Terrace High School also has some really great practices in place that I think are benefiting our students at that building. And so I'll speak to this in a little bit as well, but we've been working to spread these practices more widely to align our program across all of our high schools to ensure that all of our students have access and be able to attain a higher graduation rate and be successful and attain success. So they have a collaborative team-oriented approach. They have weekly meetings with their entire ML team. And they collaborate really closely with their parent educators as well. They have a really robust system for intake interviews, which we have actually aligned across all of our high schools now. But that was one thing that they had in place. So that they, when they bring in a new student, they're talking to them really closely around, how are you coming to us from your other country? What classes have you taken? To ensure that they are getting those appropriate credits connected to their previous transcripts and previous histories. And then making sure that they're placed in classes that align to their interests and align to their academic history.
That was something one of our student advisors brought up early in the year was that some kids didn't have records and were not able to get credit. Have we done anything to?
Yes, great question. We're actually piloting a process right now. We've put together a process for students and families who may come in and, for example, come from a war-torn country and don't have the ability to get their transcript because their school is no longer standing. And so we have a process that we're piloting this spring to do like an intake interview and intake process with the families to find out more about their educational experience and background to award them with appropriate credits. So we're piloting a process this spring and we're going to see how it goes. And I'm going to connect with the high school principals in June, July and see how that turns out and how that worked, yeah.
Do you by any chance have the percentages of, the percent of ML kids at each of the high schools?
So I don't have that in front of me, but I can definitely get you that.
For the pilot program that you're working on, are there any OSPI barriers to that?
I reached out to OSPI to get guidance for that, actually. And so I'm using some guidance from them to inform the pilot process, yeah.
Cool.
Great question.
Would it be accurate to say that this is helping these incoming students have a greater sense of belonging? Like, we see these intakes?
I think so, yeah. Because the other thing that I actually didn't put on the slide, but they do very intentionally in Mount Lake Terrace High School, is connecting them with a peer who can, could be a same-language speaking peer if they have that, but who then provides them with a tour of the school. And then they can have someone who's kind of automatically and immediately a friend that they can connect with. So yeah, I definitely think that's part of it.
And when they match them, do they match them by language if they can?
They try to, yes, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so now I'm going to dive into talking a little bit more about language development and what that was like in our system. So as I spoke to a little bit earlier, WIDA is the name of our new assessment. It used to be an acronym. They've actually shifted. It's no longer an acronym. So it's just a name now, WIDA. But these are the language levels our students can score on the WIDA assessment. So they can score anywhere from one to six. Each of those levels also has a name, so you can see them on the slides there. And our students exit, depending on their grade level, somewhere in a level of four. If they're a kindergartner, they exited four point oh. If they're a twelfth grader, they exited four point seven. So it depends on their grade level. But you can see there, the WIDA levels go beyond that. That just speaks to, we are continuing to acquire language even after we're able to show proficiency on the English Language Proficiency Assessment that the state has determined. Another piece the state is adding this year, new this year, is SBA data is going to be part of our exit criteria. So previously, it used to just be four point oh or four point seven, grade level dependent. Now, if you take the SBA and score proficient on the SBA, English Language Arts, and get at least a four point three on the WIDA, then you can exit. So now we'll have two data points to inform us. And when I, while it's not, it doesn't go back historically to exit students. I did look to see, we got about eighty students last year that would have exited had that criteria been in place. So it will benefit a chunk of our students, yeah. Okay, so I am not fully fluent in Espanol. So I'm just going to speak to this kind of high level, but wanted to give you the experience of our students and what they may experience if they enter into a classroom setting and there are no supports put in place for them to access the content. So if you're a newcomer and you don't speak Spanish and a teacher is just talking to you or puts this information up on the board in front of you, this is what you would understand. I don't know how many of you are proficient in Spanish, but this is what you might understand. Maybe it's nothing.
Have those like, that person's information.
Okay? Um, if you are a beginner speaker, you might be able to pick out a few words. So you might be able to hear good morning, or today, or maybe I know my numbers and my shapes, so I can pick out a couple of words, but I still don't really know what I'm doing. When we have intermediate, so kind of in that like three range on that WIDA scale, I might be picking up some more words, maybe more directions, like open your book to page one hundred. Setenta y dos. Now, maybe I'm just going to page one hundred, really that's a hundred and seventy-two. Um, so increasing our understanding, but still not quite there versus an advanced speaker would be able to pick up a lot more words, could understand the direction, maybe I'm still not understanding that word methyl. So I'm picking up a lot more, but still might be missing some pretty key components.
So when I went through this on my own, and I have like pre-kindergarten levels of Spanish, I, just to show you what kinds of mistakes kids could make, with that number, I decided the number, the page number was seventy-two instead of a hundred and seventy-two. And you can imagine if I turned, you know, to page seventy-two, I would be clueless, right? Because I would not be anywhere in the right place. And so I was sort of giggling to myself like, yeah. I mean, I never doubted that I couldn't be able to like put my, my other tongue.
So, yes, thank you for sharing that. So something that we just, just want to highlight, so this I forgot to say is a middle school math lesson. And you're not able to like add visuals, right? Like, just to your point, this is the page number you need to be on. That's what page you should be on, adding that visual for students. Connecting students with cognates, so making sure that they know in Spanish neto, English is net. And that's what we're talking about. And then it's really related to this math concept of having that visual of the net showing the geometrical shape. So making sure we have those, what we call scaffolds and supports in place for our students to have access to the content. So I'll speak a little bit more to this, but we've been working this year to support our teachers with these resources so that they can do that to support our students. So when we think about those WIDA levels, levels one through six, we get information from the state on whether our students are progressing or not. So we also have information on whether they've exited, whether they've met their proficiency. But I wanted to begin with our progressing information. And this I can have compared to some other systems, because I have been also working closely with other districts to find out what practices do they have in place that we could translate and use in our system as well. But what I see, what I'll explain here is this is the WIDA percent of students progressing. So that means they're making growth, the expected growth. There's a whole complicated formula around the expected growth. And this is a cohort of students. So it's from, making growth from our first year of WIDA, twenty-one, twenty-two, to last year's data in twenty-two, twenty-three. So what I notice when I look at this, for example, is if I look at the first grade group, if I just compare next to Everett, for example, we're very close to Everett, our first graders. But then I jump over to third graders and we're way below all of the other systems there. This is only one year of growth. We are going to get our WIDA data for this year, next week. So we'll be able to have some additional information to see if there's more trends that we can connect to. But you'll see there are those same systems. Everett is in blue, Muckeltoe in yellow, Bellevue in green, Seattle is orange, and then Washington State is that final kind of turquoise color on the far right.
I'm just trying to make sense of this. Like, goes down the, he was like.
And that's why I think I'd like to see one more year, to see if there's any kind of trend, because it's, it's a little confusing when you look at it.
Well, the question is, is it this cohort? Or is it something going on in our third grade program?
Yes, and that's why I want to look at another year's data to find out.
When you get that, we would love to get it like through a Friday memo or however, a superintendent, my or two has descended to us. But, because what I look at is her, you know, when I'm thinking like, is it our cohort? Or is there something you need to think about for the, this?
Yeah, and kind of to speak to that, actually, I'll go to this next slide. Um, this is our secondary students, so I'll give you a moment to process. But again, you'll see it by grade level, and it's that percent progressing. So those students who are making the expected growth. And when I'm looking at other systems like us, I've worked really closely with Everett this year, and I actually asked them, what are you doing with your twelfth graders that is so positive? Because I see something positive happening there. And they weren't really able to tell me. They weren't really able to pull out one thing. They had several ideas and several things. But I am kind of waiting for that next piece of information to come so that we can have another year. So it's not just one cohort. So as soon as I have that, I will be able to share it. Um, so that was percent progressing. This is our exited rates. This has come from an official document from OSPI called the Rainbow Spreadsheet. But it's something that the Multilingual Education Department from OSPI sends us. And so I've highlighted just because it's a lot of information, a few things to point out. So this is the percent of students who are attaining proficiency. That means they're exiting our program. They get that four point oh or that four point seven. And this is districts with over a thousand multilingual learners. And so we are in the bright green. We exited around five point two percent. Washington State is purple. They were just above us at five point four percent. And then some of the other districts that have similar demographics to us are in orange. So Everett is in orange there, and they were down ten point seven percent exit. And then some of the other districts that are in orange there are Federal Way and Hoover. So they were lower than us, but Everett was much higher exit rate than us. As was Lake Washington, Essequo, I'm not sure if you can see all those there.
Are we all using the same assessments?
We are, yeah.
So, uh, district like Lake Washington has more resources. Do we know what, are they doing anything different other than having maybe more resources than we have?
Um, uh, that's a great question. Actually, it came from Lake Washington, so I understand pretty closely what they do. And they have a pretty robust collaboration and co-teaching model. They also do have more resources. The way they fund their ML program, I know, is supported with levy dollars, local levy funding, along with the state TVIP dollars that they have. So I think that's probably a large part of it, are the resources that they have available.
And we, we have a lot of languages. And like, e, I feel like each group, how well one language translates into English is different based upon their native, like, English language. I guess what I'm trying to say here. And so my interest is, are the ones that have, and you may not know this, the ones that have higher rates of getting out, do they have like fewer languages maybe so they're able to like?
Not necessarily. I hear what you're saying, but not necessarily. Because I know Lake Washington has over a hundred languages in their district as well. And I think their demographic is slightly different. Like, the families that live in Lake Washington School District are slightly different than our demographic, so.
Like, do they have the same percent of students on free or reduced meal?
No, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be interesting to, instead of lining them up like that or to have what percent they have for free or reduced, because we know that that's such a heavy-duty correlate to more difficulties for kids. So just in general, they're coming from homes that come with more resources because they're able to afford living in Lake Washington.
And just the question is, is there anything else we could do to close the gap? Or is it all just family resource and school?
I think I might speak to that coming up. I have some ideas. This is a group of students that I actually think we have some celebrations around. So they've previously been called long-term English learners, which of course, education shortens everything to an acronym, so LTL. But in the interest of moving towards a more asset-based language, the state is trying to move towards calling this group of students experienced multilingual learners. These are just students who are in our program for five years or more. For some reason, they have a really hard time achieving that English proficiency on the English proficiency assessment they're required to take each year. And so when we look at the districts who have over a thousand, we are eleventh out of the forty-three for exiting those students. So, no, it's not on there, so I wrote it down. We have about thirty-five point five percent of our students. Whereas at the state level, the state percentage is forty-one percent of Washington State are students who have been in the program for five years or more, or more. I still think we have work to do to meet the needs of these students. But this is where we live within comparison to other districts in the state. And then this is just a snapshot of students who've been in a program for five years or more, the same group of kids by high school and program, secondary program. E-learning is more than just high school, but, so. This also might answer someone asked earlier, the number of students that are in the.
Percentage wise, yeah. And, and when you take a look at that plus the free-reduce data and then go back to look at the progress. and then go back to look at the, the progress that each schools make. I could argue that Littler High School is probably making more significant progress even than Long Terrace High School, given the difference in pre-reduced much.
Yeah, looking at that by building, yeah, that would be interesting, so I could get that, for sure. Okay. Okay, so now I wanted to kind of speak to, um, our program and what we are doing within our program. And the pieces that come from the state as well. So, just in November, Washington State Multilingual Education Department and OSPI published a statewide strategic plan for multilingual learners. So within that strategic plan, there's kind of four big buckets. The first one is to promote asset-based mindset, so I can mention that, kind of changing our language so that we are demonstrating a belief in all learners and their assets. Strengthening our instructional practices, so making sure that all teachers are able to support with those visuals and other scaffolds that I modeled a little bit ago, um, so that we can increase those graduation rates. But along with that, we have to be able to provide support for those educators so that they understand this. So ensuring that we are providing professional learning for our teachers, focused on strategies that meet the needs of our language learner. Um, and then engaging our students and our families. So making sure that we're communicating effectively with them and also elevating the voices of our families of multilingual learners to make sure that they are heard. Um, sometimes our families don't know how to navigate our system, so making sure that we're connecting with them and partnering with other organizations to, um, hear their voices. So those are the four, um, core principles, and there's goals within each of that. What's really great about this document, which is linked, um, so you can peruse it if you are interested, um, it has indicators for making progress towards each of the goals for both the state, the district level, as well as the school and classroom level. So every person who's involved in the education of our students can look at what can they work on and support to move forward with this strategic plan. So that is kind of a state-level piece that I've been grounding my work with our department and our system in. And really, as I mentioned, it's moving more towards a collaborative model. So this image kind of shows, um, the twentieth century model versus the twenty-first century model. So previously, our English learner teachers, multilingual learner teachers were kind of isolated and thought you're teaching language, then the students go and learn content. But really, there's a lot of research that shows that students need to learn language through the content, which is what I spoke to when I was mentioning how the WEDA standards are connected to each of the content areas. And so making sure that we are all working together and collaborating to meet the needs of our students. So that's a big shift that we're working on. Um, these are the multilingual education program models and the definitions from OSPI. We have certain program models that we are allowed to use from OSPI guidance. Dual language is actually the only model that meets our state requirement for bilingual education. But supportive mainstream and content-based sheltered instruction are what they call alternative models. So those are the two that we have in addition to dual language, as well as our open doors program that we have at CAP, um, and we have another open doors program that's in with our e-learning. I'm blanking on the name right now.
Graduation Alliance.
Thank you, Graduation Alliance, um, is another open doors program. So, those are the ones that we have in our district. There are others in the state that you may see or hear from others, but those are the ones we have. So, um, I know I did a study session on dual language, so you're all familiar with that. I'll speak more to supportive mainstream is when, we use this most at the elementary level, when students are in the class with their peers and the, um, ML specialist or teacher is engaging with them in, in the mainstream way. So like collaborating with the teacher, making sure they have access to those visuals and scaffolds in their class. That also happens at the secondary level for students at more advanced proficiency levels. Um, and then we also have content-based sheltered instruction at the secondary level for students who maybe are newer to English. And then our ML teachers are teaching them English language arts content through a language class and kind of doing the, what's called sheltered instruction, which is providing them with strategies to meet the grade level content. So then, um, another piece I wanted to speak to was some of the work we're doing to move all of that forward with our program and to align across our district. So we have a partnership with Education Northwest this year, and they're helping us to put together a robust program guide for our multilingual learner program. And I'm doing that in collaboration with our teachers. So we have, um, a group of teachers who are on a committee, and they have come together to look at that OSPI statewide strategic plan and then talk about what are the things we need to do in our system and connect it to our district strategic plan around equity, engagement, and excellence, um, to then move our program forward. What are the things that we have in place? So within that, we discovered we didn't have a program vision and mission. So that was kind of our first step, was drafting that to make sure we're all on the same page with what we are working toward. And so we worked with them, um, back in the late fall, early winter, and then went back to teachers and principals to get feedback on the mission and mission. And we have a final draft, but I haven't gotten the final feedback from everyone, so that will be finalized by the end of the school year. But this is our, um, program vision and mission draft that we've come up with and that the Edmonds School District Multilingual Department empowers multilingual students to achieve their full potential as thriving members of their communities. And then our mission is to provide rich learning environments for multilingual students that are research-based, rigorous, and culturally relevant. We engage with students, families, staff, and the community in a shared responsibility for student achievement. So again, wanting to move towards that collaborative model so that we're all, um, moving forward for our multilingual learners. Um, another thing that's come out of the work with the committee and the program guide, um, I kind of alluded to it earlier, but is some of that alignment that we need to have across our schools. So one of the things that we're looking and actively doing is aligning our courses that we're offering. We discovered that some of our middle schools were offering courses, but maybe they didn't align with each other across middle schools or high schools. Um, and so making sure that our names of the courses are aligned, as well as the content that they're teaching within them. Um, clarifying the program model that I spoke to, so are they accessing a content-based sheltered instruction or supportive mainstream? And then we also discovered, um, a few months ago that our newcomer students were not accessing core content at the level that we need them to in order to graduate. And so in order to support with that, we are going to be offering some high school sheltered content courses. So that would be like at Meadowdale, they're going to offer a sheltered algebra course. So that means that that course is going to be built in a way that makes it more accessible for our language learners so that they can earn that credit they need to graduate and be successful with it. So along with that, we are ensuring that we're providing that support for the educators who are doing that work. Uh, so ensuring that they have some release time to do that planning and make sure that if they have, they have resources already, but is there anything they need to do or plan ahead of time to modify or, um, make those resources more accessible for our language learners? So this is something we're gonna be launching next school year, um, and creating some cohorts. So all of those teachers at all of the high schools who will be teaching sheltered algebra will be able to meet together and talk to each other so that we can continue with that program alignment to increase access for our newcomer students. I just talked a lot, are there any questions?
I'm curious, how, um, so time is provided, will, will that time be facilitated by someone in particular? Is that all those meetings with all those high school teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Be facilitated by people from here in the district office? Will that be school-based, how would that?
Yeah, it would be facilitated by the TOSs that I work with.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, they would be closely supporting that work for those teachers, yeah.
So, um, so our, I'm like even asking, um, those courses would be run by a teacher who's got some of this training and support? Would there be an ML teacher involved in supporting how much of that time or?
Yeah, so, um, it depends on the school. Whether some, in some of these cases, it is an ML teacher who's teaching the course. It depends on, there's lots of different.
Teaching algebra.
Well, like, we have an ML teacher who is, um, endorsed in social studies, so she can teach you history. So we have teachers who have multiple endorsements. And if they have an English learner endorsement and, uh, content area endorsement, that is a preferred model for con- for a sheltered instruction course. Um, if not, we would potentially have a co-teaching situation where an ML teacher is supporting within that class as well. It just depends on the staffing capacity of the school.
Is there research behind this?
Mm-hmm.
With sheltered model?
Yeah, yeah, it's one of the, um, models here that's considered an alternative model from OSPI. Um, and it's something that can support with access for our students who are newest to English to access that content.
No, I get the theory.
Yeah.
I just wondered if there was any data.
Yeah.
That showed that these, this kind of model would work.
Yeah, do you want more? Do you want me to follow up with some more research?
Yeah, if you have something, you can get to it.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Okay, um, so that's just kind of one piece that we're planning for next school year, but I wanted to speak to the professional learning that's happened this, this school year. Um, we have done a lot of things to support our teachers, system-wide, with meeting the needs of our language learners. So we have collaborated very closely with student learning. So all of the district-wide professional learning that's happened focused on literacy has had strategies that support language learners embedded into them. So in October, we focused on language objectives for our secondary teachers so that they all heard that's a strategy that supports students with understanding what's the language demand of this lesson. Um, in March, our district PD day focused on background knowledge and vocabulary, which are two areas that are also very important for connecting our language learners with the content learning. And then, um, on our date coming up in May, we have, it's kind of like a choose-your-own-adventure for teachers, and we have multiple offerings. Um, there's gonna be one that I'm gonna be leading focused on translation and when is translation a support and how to use it effectively as a support. And then there's gonna be some others focused on some sheltered instruction strategies that teachers can use. Um, we also have done specific professional learning for our ML teachers and our dual language teachers, so focusing on dual language specific learning and looking at the, um, WEDA standards. So the WEDA test also is a whole set of standards. So we've been working with our ML teachers on understanding those and how to support our language learners with acquiring what those standards are. Um, and then helping them learn how to advocate and support with the ML program and WEDA, um, standards at their site. And then we've also done some school site professional learning for different buildings. Um, there are some ML teachers who are leading professional learning at their site. There are some sites who've asked our TOSs to come out and lead some professional learning. Um, and we've done those in kind of, in like a template. Here's a session you can lead, and you can plug in your building level data and then lead that session. Um, and then we've also had some offerings for, um, both PSYOP and LAB, which are both sheltered instruction strategies. Um, LAB, we've had two different cohorts go through a full two-day, and then after the two-day, they have a four-day, so it's six days total training. And then PSYOP, we have some internal trainers that are gonna be launching a three-day training, starting this Friday, actually. Um, and then we've also done some work with some teachers who are moving forward with the co-teaching model and helping them understand how to do that. And then, um, we've done some work with our, uh, principals as well in our principal learning network. So collaborating with principals to make sure they have an understanding around this and making sure that they have the support they need to lead their buildings. Um, these are just some exciting celebrations and successes. Um, so as I mentioned, all teachers have been engaging in learning about sheltered instruction strategies to meet the needs of our multilingual learners in our district-wide literacy professional learning. We have had, four hundred and seventy-one teachers have attended LAB or PSYOP since 2016. We've had thirty-one administrators attend a session called PSYOP for administrators, so they know how to lead that work, um, in the last two summers, in twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, back in October of twenty-two, we did a district-wide PSYOP training, which was just like a toe-dip into PSYOP, so we had one thousand five hundred teachers at that. Um, and then this year in January, we had about a hundred and fifty paraeducators took multilingual learner-specific sessions at their day that they had in January. And we're also part of our ESD, the Northwest ESD, we're part of a consortium. So they offer professional learning opportunities with other regional districts that we have had a lot of our ML teachers engage with to learn more, which is where we made connections with other systems like Everett, um, to learn more from them. Um, and then these are our next steps. So we have some upcoming, um, curriculum adoptions. We're looking at an English language development resource for our dual language to support those students with their English language acquisition. Um, what has come out of aligning our courses at the secondary level is a need for a curriculum that is comprehensive. So we're in the process of starting a needs assessment for that. Um, and trying to move towards more inclusive practices so that all of our multilingual learners are able to access the content. We have offered that professional learning on WEDA, sheltered instruction strategies, co-teaching. Another piece I haven't mentioned yet is we've been closely collaborating with student services um, to really ensure that we're not over-identifying our multilingual learners for special education. We have something called the Critical Data Matrix and Process that we are, um, making sure that we're all aligned on and updated. It recently, um, got updated by the author of that process, so we're updating it for our system. And then, um, looking at dual language program expansion. It is the preferred model through OSPI to meet the needs of our multilingual learners. Um, and since we have so many of our Spanish speakers, um, looking at that as a next step as well to support. That's all I have for you.
That's a lot.
It is a lot. I'm sorry if I talked too fast. I was trying to get through it all. And I wanted to make sure you had a break before the recording.
No, this has been great. Very comprehensive, very well organized, uh, very informative, showing us all pieces and parts. Um, I think what I love hearing are the kinds of digging deeper that you're doing in terms of what are the successful strategies that are happening within our system at these schools that we see it, as well as in other systems?
Yeah.
And helping to, to embed those where we can, um, to make a difference and really digging into, you know, where the needs are and how to move ahead on that. So, I, I really appreciate that. Does anybody have more questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that the, um, it's very, like, there's great clarity. And for, uh, from my experience, the, what matters is both clarity as well as, uh, support and accountability. And so that's the, the piece that I, I'm wondering about from, uh, from district leadership, from building leadership, um, all the way down into the classrooms in terms of, okay, we're clear about what we're expecting, we're gonna provide the support to you, but then what's the accountability measure? And, or if you're for not seeing what we are, um, expecting to see, what then are we doing about that? And, and, and that's, uh, where I think the rubber meets the road with, um, all, all instruction, really.
Yeah.
Uh, that, for this particular grant.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up. I was actually in a meeting today with some principals through one of those principal learning networks, and we were looking at where some of these sheltered instruction strategies intersect with the Danielson framework, because that is our accountability tool. And so, um, making sure that our leaders in the system know where those intersections exist, I think is important.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and, and you've done a great job, and I missed, again, I apologize in advance if I missed something. The sheltered instruction strategy, does that mean like a class for ML students for?
So the term itself I find confusing, 'cause people who aren't in this world don't understand it. It comes from historically sheltering them away from their peers. That's not the practice, though. The practice is just, sheltered instruction strategies are really strategies that provide, um, instruction in a way that's accessible for our language learners. So, one example is connecting to their prior knowledge, building their background based on their experiences. So if I have a student come in and I know what their previous experiences are from their previous country or culture, if I make those connections for them, they're more likely to connect and engage with the learning. That's a sheltered instruction strategy. if I make those connections for them, they're more likely to connect and engage with the learning. That's a sheltered instruction strategy. Um, there's a lot of research behind sheltered instruction strategies meeting the needs of all students. They're critical for our language learners, because that's how our language learners are able to both meet the content standards and acquire English, but they benefit all learners. And so there's, there's probably twenty to thirty years of research behind it.
Specifically, I don't know, a class for ML students? It might be, but it isn't.
So, yeah, so it could be an algebra class with some additional scaffolds and strategies in place to make it more accessible for a language learner. Would be a sheltered, sheltered algebra class.
Okay.
Yeah.
They should change that name.
I know, the name is confusing.
Yeah, I'm changing it, it's just like, we're just cyber-gaming all the ML students, I'm sure.
But, but in that classroom you just described, it could also be a regular algebra class with some ML kids in there, and the teacher is using sheltered approaches, that's, that's either with the whole class or with those ML kids, but it's not necessarily an entirely ML class, right?
Well, and all of the practices in sheltered, sheltered instruction are good practices for all instruction.
True, yeah. Really, like, all classes should be sheltered, in my opinion, as far as the strategies, like, have the strategies in place to meet the needs, yes.
Very thoughtful, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Of course, yeah.
This might be more of a like a question, I'm just going to go to the two of you. Um, I was able to successfully have a conversation with someone with an English proficiency recently through their phone, translated back and forth. And like, I'm curious if we have talked about any sort of tech that would allow real-time automated translation to help, like, you know, you show us the math thing, like, okay, the teacher speaks, the student has their Chromebook, oh, that's what they want, you know? Have we had any conversations about that?
Um, you know, conversations.
It's a two-fold answer. I have not had any conversations about that, but I see it happening all the time, yeah, in classrooms.
Okay.
So, um, but what conversations have you had, like, in part of the point?
Yeah, um, I, I, I also think it's happening, and I think there are places where it could be happening more. So that's actually what I'm doing with my session on the twenty-fourth for teachers, is talking about where is it appropriate to translate? Because, yes, it's great, and especially for our students who are brand-new, and we need them to learn the academic English to be successful. So it's having that fine line of where are we translating to support them, but not translating to just translate the whole text. Um, so that's what I'm doing a whole session on, the twenty-fourth, so, yeah.
The, the AI translations are not as showing good, too, right?
It's very much dependent, yeah.
Yeah, and it also, um, depends on our students' backgrounds. Some of our students come in and aren't literate in their first language. So if you're providing a translation that's written in white, they can't read it. So it's, it's a matter of knowing your students, really, and knowing what's going to benefit them.
And we use those as a part of our tech lobby, and this is a for students specifically, hoping to use them at, um, every office, so. And that is actually all oral.
Yes.
So I can speak into it and say, are you here to register a student? It takes the inputs, puts it out into somebody else's, so you can have a real-time conversation. So, um, so, but I see it in classrooms, do you mean?
Yeah, it's definitely happening in classrooms. I think it's, uh, making sure that all teachers know what their resources are, so that's.
And I love that, you know, Nicole will be doing a, a session on when is translation best, and then it's, you know, best to have your teaching point just slightly beyond your knowledge of English, when is it best to understand the concept, you know, those are things you have to grasp, yeah.
But I've seen, I've seen that the conversational translation, you both, when I was visiting a building and a student walked up to the principal and showed the principal his phone.
Yeah.
Oh.
And the principal responded, and, and they come.
Yeah.
Um, I've also seen a kid, kids.
Oh, yeah.
They're working in groups, right? They're trying to solve something together. And all of a sudden, the kids, even though this, can't share their ideas, and they find out that this multilingual kid in a different language is really smart, it's a really good idea, but hadn't been able to really explain it to them. And then they're like, pretty impressed.
The, the danger is, and this is happening, I see this happening, like, building right now, is that you can, any kid with a PowerPoint can open it up and it can listen to the teacher conversation and translate it automatically, just like what you're talking about, into their own language. Um, hundreds of languages. And so the student could be basically getting all of their instruction and do all of their work in their own language, which is great content-wise, but it's not helping them to get on the edge, like, where. So that's, that's one of the drawbacks to it. I've got one kid who's, like, completely dependent on it now. Thought it was a great idea in the beginning, but now they're really dependent on it, and they have grown.
So interesting.
Right, so there's, there's a risk.
So it's something that teachers have to be really aware of and help mitigate, how it's being used and how it's being integrated with.
Because the, the risk is, the teacher's like, oh, phew, I don't have to worry about this kid.
Yeah, and that's.
Whereas like, that's, it almost works, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
So this study session is now adjourned, um, are you going to get that too?
I'm going to text everyone around six oh seven.
Thank you all, that was.
As soon as I get the lead data, I will send you the information.
Thank you so much.